Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:02. And we're going to do a roll call real quick. Representative Bailey.
Here.
Representative Brennan.
Here.
Thank you, Representative Sir. Representative Cop?
You.
Representative Brickman cannot join us until 7:30. Hopefully we're not here that long. Representative Somero. Yeah. And. There we go. That's everybody. We have some new business on the agenda. We're going to start our budget reviews for the Community Development and Services Subcommittee. First up, we have the Grotton Public Library. With the account 1063. And if a member of the committee would please move the budget number for account 1063 Grotton Public Library.
Page 142.
Page 142.
Don't move.
You need to put the amount for the record.
Okay, the amount.
Page 142. The starch, would you? We're just trying to find it here. This is the bottom.
One million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second. Thank you. Second, do we have any discussion on this item before we invite our guests here to speak? Do you like introduce yourself and?
Yes, sure. My name is Jennifer Emili. I'm the Director of Grotton Public Library. And what you see before you, our proposed budget is a 3.9% increase from last year. The difference is really based on contractual wages for our full-time staff and minimum wages for increases for our part-time staff. We are also asking for additionally about $2,200 to help offset some inflationary expenses that we have seen since COVID has wrecked havoc on all of our budgets, but that would be things like printing, buys, paper, things of that nature. So you're looking for a slight operating.
Representatives, do you have any questions? Seeing none, I do have a question. So in the town council meeting, you had noted that previous tries to find the four positions, COVID happened, ruined. You'd like to eventually get up for that stopping. My question is, and I understand we can't increase the budget. Your team?
Yeah, the, or any department, yeah, whatever the higher number is between mine and the council.
And you're gonna bring the thing. Well, just for information then, for future planning.
Sure.
Is the plan to add those four positions? And at the same time, is it one per year? What would you guys like to do?
So when we were speaking of that, we eliminated a full-time managerial position in order to offset some of the things we were seeing on the floor, meaning our part-time staff, we wanted to add some part-time staff. And then COVID happened, and then we didn't think it would be prudent at that time because we didn't need the staff to continue holding those positions in our budget. So now, as we're moving along and seeing the busyness start to pick up, people are coming back to the library. We'd like to eventually add as we go, and it's just basically going to be determined on, you know, if storytimes or things for children tend to explode more than we think in the next year, maybe we would just add one part-time person to help facilitate with that. So to your question, it may not be four at once. It would just be a gradual one at a time. But we will, you know, talk to you about what those needs could be and, you know, present those in a, in such manners.
Any other comments or questions from committee members?
I just want to, I'm fully in support of whatever we can give to any library that we are, that is in our town or connected with our town.
Yes, I echo it. I think public libraries are the epitome of what government should be, what community should be. Actually, love our library. So proud to have you here, all of your work. So thank you very much. I do know that we have one RTM member that's in attendance. Representative Chase, did you have anything to add to this discussion?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. So the number on the floor is one million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Representative Bailey, thank you. Motion, care, oh, any abstaining? Motion carries with one opposed. All right. So moving on to our next budget item.
It was four.
Oh, it was four. I'm so, so sorry. That. And this excellent, even better. Next budget item is 3310 Borrowwit CT up on page 146. Those following along at home. If I have a committee member, please move a number.
Sure. I'll do that one. We'll go down the road. Borrowwit is letting it 3310s. I move the amount of $20,000.
Second.
The number, my book is 20, 29.
Twenty thousand and twenty dollars.
That's the money in the plan. The appropriation is at the top. So that's what I should have been reading. Okay, so the motion stands as ready.
Do I have a second? Yeah. So you weren't on my roll call list for representatives. Can I get your name for the record?
My last name is K A D D E N. My first name is Sarah.
With an H. She's our new, yes, I went, but she was joining us and I don't, does that mean that our, just to be sure, Mr. Burt, does that mean that our committee membership has expanded in our quorum?
I've not been told, so I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yes, it has.
So it has. I have, I have eight folks with my quorum at five. I just want to make sure I'm within my bounds here. All right. There we go. Eight in a second. Thank you. Just to speak to this item.
So this item is basically a state, basically a state grant that we receive every year. And it's with the reciprocal borrowing from other towns, we get a percentage. And it's a ratio that's developed at the state level, and then it gets paid out around May of every year. This fund is always in question because it's really up to the governor's, you know, budget at that time where they decide that they're going to cut it or keep it. And we're always, of course, pro-keeping it. We have a lot of people that borrow from our library, and it's nice to have this money. Also, this money is for library services only, so it can't be, you know, put back into the general fund. So we look for ways that we can utilize this money. Like last year in the past, we've used it for CIPs that we were going to put in for servers and technology. And instead, we've reverted that money into this Borrowwit Fund. So we've paid with a lot of technology with this money.
Any questions from committee members? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Right. Now we are on to CIP 7 Technology. This is letter G. It's the Town Meeting Room AV Presentation Equipment and Replacement Upgrade. And what I'd like to share with committee members, in case you haven't seen the email that came out earlier today from Mr. Burt, according to a town attorney opinion a few years back, if a CIP item was reduced, we as RTM members cannot reestablish that number. We, we can't increase it at all. We can go lower, but we can't increase it.
Even with a two-thirds vote.
Even with a two-thirds vote because it's not considered a departmental budget item.
Thank you.
So that doesn't apply here, I believe. Let me just double check before I speak. But it doesn't apply here. It will apply to some of the planning CIPs. So keeping that in mind, moving forward for this one CIP 7G, could I please have a committee member move a number? And that's going to be found on page 239.
Yep, 119,000.
Sorry.
So capital program. I don't see a number here, so $72,000.
Correct. I believe.
Second.
Second. Do you like to speak to this item, Sean?
Sure. I'm Sean Greeley. I'm the Public Libraries Grotton Municipal Video Specialist. We started, this is the fourth year of our upgrade. First year, we replaced all the micro viral systems in town because of SEC regulations and changing frequencies. And there's quite a few of those. Second year was this building that we completed. As you can see, quite a few things have changed here. When COVID happened, we kind of redid all three of the meeting rooms, made them hybrid. So we're able to do this tonight. And then this year is the Town Hall and both Grotton Public Library. We completed the Town Hall Conference Rooms. And now we're on to the library. So you start seeing some changes over the summer. This is the fourth year. Fourth year, we like to go into the senior center. And that's a pretty big facility with lots of meeting rooms, lots of programs, lots of flexibility, things happening in there. So it's obviously, you know, why we have such a large number there. It's going to be quite a bit of work to get some maybe equipment in. We're going to put some hybrid rooms in for staff for programming, particularly programming. Then, of course, the RTM meetings. I don't know if you watched the last one. We had some technical difficulties. It kind of looks like it's supposed to be that way, but that system has really kind of been hodgepodge together, kind of piecemeal together through COVID. By getting the monitor here, we got one from, that was left over from a school project. It's not really set up to do what we wanted to do, and we had some audio issues at the last meeting. So we're hoping that we can have something that's in place that's going to do what we need to do at a moment's notice. Then the other part of that, I think the police facilities or no, the parks and rec, I'm sorry. That's, you know, we want to kind of complete whole park and rec programs, buildings. And that'll be Spicer's House. If they ever do move, they, we can relocate that equipment as well. It's not going to be too much equipment up there. But there will be some so that staff can hybrid in and hold meetings and so forth. And it might be some remote equipment with that as well. So that is our plan. And then the last year will be next year, and we'll be kind of finishing up a project there with some of the other buildings that are left.
Thank you. Committee members, do we have any questions?
Sure. Just, so this is year four of a five-year plan. I remember from last year.
Right.
That's great. I think the work that you got, you do, as you know, I've been on other calls with you. I just am such admiration for how you guys pivoted and what you've done to make this town continue to run through these hybrid solutions and so many clever grant finding and that kind of thing. So thank you for that. Now, once we get past year five, I'm imagining there will be another five-year plan that comes up. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think what will happen is we'll kind of evaluate where we are at that point. And, you know, it may not be next year. I mean, we may look to skip a year and then start to look at other things and see what other needs are. But I think we're always kind of reevaluating, you know, technology changes really quick.
We know it does. Technology does.
No.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining? Thank you very much for joining.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Scene control is over.
The next item that we have is account 1046, the Planning Development Services. Have Director Reiner here to speak. This account settled. Folks, you can find this account on page 128 in your budget book. When you're ready, Mr. Reiner.
Oh, oh, I wasn't sure if you needed to move number first.
Oh, yeah, let me.
Sorry.
Sorry. Getting ahead of myself. Account 1046, do I have a committee member to move a number?
Page 129.
128.
Oh.
128 is the summary page typically, and then when I have down with the numbers.
I don't have.
130.
I just want to confirm that I'm reading the correct number. This is 1046.
Last year's budget book, so I'm no use to anyone.
131 is.
Yeah. Look at, yeah, look at either. The bottom line is it's 1,688,000.
Okay, I move the number. Move the number of 1,688,859.
All right. Mr. Reiner, would you like to speak here?
Sure. So thank you, everyone. Again, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Thanks for having me here tonight. So tonight, our Department Budget is a 3.9% increase over last year's budget. It's basically going up about $62,000. The majority of that budgetary increase is really contractual salary increases. We do have some funding requested to continue our support with our ARPA program that we've been working. We've also requested some funding for an intern for our sustainability program to maintain our economic development webpage, as well as our Greater Grotton webpage and our public engagement software. And just overall, our personnel expenses went up $67,000. Our operating expenses went down almost $5,000 this year. So again, majority of those increases are really just the contractual increases. Some of our other items in our budget that are say bigger ticket or from the CIP, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from committee members? Could you speak to, I know there's been concern about consultants. Is that something that's related to the CIP dollars or is that in your department?
So for consultants in the CIP, we have a budgetary line item for the update to the Planet Conservation Development. That'll be a big-ticket consulting item.
Okay. And then more kind of regular use, is that coming out of the department or is that coming out of like a specific CIP project?
Some CIP projects. So the wayfinding, there's a little bit of consulting services for some of the design on that. The same would go for, as I'm running down the line, for the wayfinding signage, the Mystic Coastal Access signage, the Planet Conservation and Development, and then the technology request. That's a consultant that would be doing the scanning of those documents within our own budget. We do have some money set aside for consulting, building inspectors for when we have large, complex projects that we can bring them on. And other than that, this year, there's not really, again, our operating budget numbers have gone down. And I think even last year, we substantially reduced the amount of like, you know, consultants that are normally within some of those special project lines.
Any other questions from members? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. So we're moving on to CIPs. Starting with CIP 8A, the Economic Assistance Fund. Now, this is one of those instances where the town council did reduce the number to zero. We cannot increase that number. So. If there's any, we'll, we'll move a number.
Make a motion to approve zero.
Do I have a second?
One second.
So.
Where do we see that the town council reduced?
The town clerk sent out a spreadsheet a few days ago. That's where I'm reading off of it.
Okay, I missed it. Okay, thank you.
That's fine. I'll try to remember to bring the printout at our next meeting. So. Did you have it in front of me?
Oh, thank you.
So does anyone want to ask questions or speak to this on the Economic Assistance Fund?
I cannot remember why it was reduced to zero and what was the original number was 420 plus 125.
The original number was 50.
50, yes.
FY '24 on page 242. Am I looking at the wrong? I see 125 on my page. For FY 2022.
Run A. Just for the first year.
It's the one page number. Okay, thanks.
Yes, this was actually a recommendation.
Yeah, we have, there's plenty of funding in this account. Normally, we will put money into the account every year to just kind of build it up. But we know that there's a lot of, I want to keep it on everybody's radar that it's an important item for us to fund in the future. But right now, there's a healthy balance in that fund in knowing that there's a lot of other CIP projects out there. I think it's a good year to zero without.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, CIP B, Open Space Acquisition. This one was also zeroed out. I do not believe that this was upon recommendation of the director. So.
No, I think a lot of that came from, we just acquired the property.
Right.
What was our mention?
220, yeah, 220,000.
Purchased a very large property of open space in the council body could probably go a little while before. And let's say, one can discuss, let's say, some fantastic property table here. Well, we would do, we do, we'll look at our fund balance and go through the process with the council RTM.
So does it bother to zero?
Do you have to do anything?
Yeah. Very, very open space, but yeah, this one. Let's double that number.
Any other questions from committee members? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed?
I don't know whether we moved.
Oh, did we not move a number? I'm getting ahead of myself. All right. Would we like to move a number? Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining?
She's already zeroing things out.
Come talk to me. All right. CIP C Gateway Wayfinding Sign Project, page 245. The council maintained this number. We may reduce it if we see fit. Can I have a committee member move a number, please? Second, anyone? Great. Would you like to speak to?
Yes, please. So this would fund our third phase of this project. So a number of years back, we had developed a wayfinding signage program. And, you know, for those, some, a couple of council members had had some questions about the plan. And I think sometime in the near future, we'll actually re-bring that plan back to the council and distribute it around. It is on our webpage that people can see is in the thought process behind it. As you see, many of our town facilities have been getting signage out in front. The older signage was really antiquated. It lacked consistency. And a lot of it was really composed primarily of our standard highway directional signage. And in order to provide people with some consistency and easy way to identify important destinations, we worked on that wayfinding signage plan. And again, this would pay for the third phase of it. The first phase, we installed three large Welcome to Grotton signs. Two of those are still up. One of them was recently hit by a car, which we're working on getting that one back through and paid for through the insurance. We've also fabricated a number of directional signs for that project. We're waiting to hear back from Connecticut DOT. There's a lot of logistics that there has to be consistency with them as well as any of the final destinations. If we have things that are in the city, we have to have every sign up in the town and the end destination in the city. You can't just have partial up. So that's a piece. We're also right now working on our signage for downtown Mystic. That's what last year's funding will be paying for. And a kiosk in downtown Mystic. And this next phase would really be working on a lot of additional signage between town and city. Also, some Welcome to the City Grotton signs if they wish to participate in the program. So really, it's, when we first came out with this program, we had identified it was a big-ticket item. The council and the RTM at the time said, let's take a little bite of the apple on this and be consistent over the years. And that's what we've been trying to do. So not bite off too much at any one point.
Just to mention, I've been working with Mayor Hedrickson, the city, on this. He's going to be evolving his council on, you know, make sure they get the wording they would like, that type of things.
Yeah, I think the way, the wayfinding looks terrific that we've seen done so far. Sorry about the car issue, wasn't me.
Yeah.
But, but who, this is a curiosity question for me. Do, does Grotton fund the, that beautiful historic hand carved Welcome to Mystic?
That is ours, yes.
Yeah, the area.
And we redid it a few years ago, yes.
Yeah.
It's, you know, we obviously contracted authors that are just that. That's, yeah. It's curious. That's fun. Yeah, yeah. It's fantastic.
It's so beautiful. Okay, I just wanted to know. But I think it looks great and I fully support. I think it really helps people when they come here to see lots of different things and know they get there.
Any other committee members have comments or questions? Does the DOT determine what areas get financed or do you decide that?
So it's a little bit of both. So we ask DOT, we show them the locations of where we want to put things. They have to approve. If it's on a state right of way, they have to approve it. They also have to approve the design of it. We just got an email today from DOT approving the latest phase of the signage. So that was a positive.
Okay. And if it's just town roads that's internally, you get to decide?
Yeah, but again, it has to be consistent with any of the signs that are located within the DOT right away. And that's something we would work with Public Works, with the Traffic Commission and others. So it's not just one of us goes out with a hammer and starts.
So since DOT is involved in this process, are there state funds that are contributing to it at all?
No.
No. Is the DOT driving this or is it Grotton driving?
No, this was something we're driving.
Driving.
Yeah.
And so I know there's a lot of science happening here, kind of in the town center and in the Mystic area. Submarine capital of the world where I live, we have no wayfinding signs over there. Is there any plan to bring that side of town in?
Yes, we're, we're working on it. So some of the initial signs, we're just replacing the ones along 117, trying to put something that was a little bit more visible so people could see it. We have other signs fabricated. We were just waiting for. There were some DOT hurdles that came up that I think we've resolved now. And again, that issue with just making sure it's a full coordination between town, city, because if we go from the town into the city, back into the town with any of those signs, we have to have full city sign off on all the. So, and again, same with, you know, any of our subdivisions and jurisdictions.
Sure.
So there's just a lot of coordination, a lot of parts.
And this is a bit of curiosity. We have that, I think it's overlooking that southbound, that giant submarine, black submarine.
Yeah.
Could use a nice artistic touch that part of the wayfinding plan or?
No, I don't know whose sign that is.
Yeah, I can't remember. It's DOT property, but we've done some, we do maintenance on it occasionally. We just cleared out some brush because some trees were blocking the view of it. But I don't think we actually own the sign, though. But I can't say for certain. I can get back to that.
I feel like it was just painted in the recent past.
It touched on, yeah, I think they're thinking a little, yeah, something a little more artistic, a little.
Yeah, a little gold gilding, you know? There's a navy dolphin or something on it. All right.
That can be phase five. I like, you know, Sean's model, the next phase of signage, we'll look at that sign.
All right. Any other comments or questions from committee members? Hearing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. CIP D Downtown Mystic Parking Management. This is an item that the councils wrote out. Do we have anybody to move a number?
Zero.
And would you like to speak to this at all, Mr. Reiner?
This is something we've been working on for a number of years with the town of Stonington. We hope that in the future, something We hope that in the future, something can be done here. We've done a plan. We've done a lot of public outreach. We had an incredibly well attended meeting. Oh, maybe six or so weeks ago, down in Mystic, somewhere between eighty and a hundred people were there. And although most of the people don't necessarily want paid parking, they understand that it's something we need to be looking at if, as a management scheme down there. And when we're talking about parking meters, I know this is zeroed out, but just the more times I can say this, so people understand, we're not talking about putting parking meter poles at every single stall. It's, there's a kiosk that can handle a whole row. I mean, if most cities or, you know, urban villages, coastal villages that you see like Mystic, they all have paid parking now, and what you'll see is a kiosk, and then you go put your plate number in, whether you go do it manually, whether you do it from this while you're driving around before you even get there and you can reserve the spot. It just helps direct people to where they're going to go, and then there's a lot less driving around looking for a spot. It also gives people an incentive to park in the areas where they should park and not overdo the hourly parking that we have now.
I, I know that it's been zeroed out, but my question is, I, I love this idea. I lived in West Hartford before I moved down here. It's a metered, not per spot metered, but in general, it's great.
They did a very good job of how they, yeah.
So I get it, I love it, and it's terrific. Providence went a little over the top where you had to change, you know.
Yes.
If you're in these three block sections, you can only be there for this block, so you have to move your car for a while, so that, anyway. That's, that's the extreme example of that. The key for me, whatever the solution we come up with, and I hope Stonington will come to the table with us soon. I know I heard that they might be going back, trying to get it back. But that when we do, I think the enforcement issue is, is obviously, I mean, I'm not the person with this thought, but how does that play in and who, and who manages the enforcement of it?
To be enforcing the parking, and a component could be those C S Os, the service officers we have in just the summers. But part of it is, we, you know, we need to find a better way to make sure people pay, because if you're out of town and pay, you know, if you get a ticket, essentially if you're not coming back, you don't have to pay the ticket, there's nothing we can really do about it. So I think we need to look at updating our parking ordinance and coming up with a, you know, a complimentary plan for this.
Yeah, that.
I recommend getting with E B, they're very fast with that towing company. So they've got something.
Because, you know, that enforcement is going to be so important to change the culture. Because right, right now, we know the culture, it's going to take very consistent enforcement for a while and it might be new culture.
Maybe a boot on the tire.
No, that makes the problem harder, right?
Yeah, they can.
Any other?
Oh, and, and, you know, and paid parking isn't the only solution. We're also looking at, on some of the streets, resident only parking, an employee parking permit program. So there's a number of different management solutions. But unfortunately, until you have paid parking in place, the incentive for people to utilize the other programs is very low. Because if I can drive around for five or 10 minutes in circles, further, you know, clogging up traffic and find a free spot, why am I going to go drive somewhere further away to park for free? Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from committee members? You indulge the planning and zoning nerd in me. With this move, has there been discussion about reducing parking minimums in downtown Mystic? Because I know that's a concern for a lot of developers. And if we're now taking over ownership of parking by creating perhaps paid parking and other arrangements, do you think that that would be something to help still get people down there doing business?
So.
Eliminating parking minimums for when businesses want to come in, typically when you put in your, your application, you have to say, I can guarantee I have X number of spots for my customers, and that can actually be quite prohibitive if you're in places like Mystic, and I can't guarantee that my very popular coffee shop has fifty parking spots. You know what I mean?
I do, I do.
So we.
It's something other cities are looking at.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you see that in more cities, more urban areas. We've already reduced the parking requirement substantially in Mystic. Although we, any areas that we would be metering would be the public spaces, ones that we already have, you know, kind of say, control over. At this point in time, we're not necessarily looking to add more public spaces. As the metering program, I should also say, the metering program, it's projected to pay for itself in less than a year. So the investment you get back from the meters, and then long term, you start using that, the funding from that program to start doing things like paying for additional or improving parking, walkability, ride share programs, et cetera. But at the current time, I don't think there's a need to reduce our parking minimums any further in downtown Mystic than they already are. They're already pretty low.
I think it should be zero across the board everywhere.
Yeah, I, you know, I think sometimes the market will demand it in certain areas. The little bit that we require in Mystic, I, I think is often helpful. We're not seeing people knocking down a building just to build parking. So it's making people be a little bit more creative while not completely gridlocking the area. That if, if we ever went and found an offsite piece of property on the town behalf and looked at building a standalone parking lot or any type of structured parking, which the cost of that is incredibly high, and I wouldn't recommend doing that until we had a full vetted parking management plan in place for the rest of down, downtown Mystic. Well, then would we be looking at waiving minimums? Yeah, definitely, because then there would be a, a single destination for it.
So my next question is actually for Mr. Bert. This is something that I've asked on in the past when it comes to our dear neighbors in Stonington. Is, has there been attempts to get an M O U in place to actually guarantee funding for this? I know it's an issue with that bridge. What are we doing to, like?
Well, they.
Bring them in, tear them in a contract.
They've been full partners with us on that.
Oh, until they don't.
For a week to the police commission there, he's got approval. Their, their issue that went for a vote, they have to have a vote as a people to do anything. Part of their issue was they got cut, hey, you saw this in the paper, that they updated their, they were going to update their parking ordinance. They were going to up the tickets from twenty five to fifty. But they, and then have the ability to tow from right of ways, that was really all about the street that they, like Ciderville's, I wanted. Somebody wanted.
I've got some friends who didn't clear off on that street, yeah.
Well, that's definitely a complicated issue, because it really went down by a handful of votes, and I think it was six or.
Something in that.
Yeah, ten votes, yeah. But that definitely complicated the issue. So Danielle had told us that she was going to look at going back to the police commission, so I would hope they could change in how they approach it this time. But she's fully committed, she fully believes in this plan. They, we've had joint meetings quite often, and they've been a whole one.
What year are we on talking about this?
Well, it was starting when I was here, so.
And who's, and in the volleyball match, whose ball started with the fun thing in the pocket? My point is, we go back and forth with the town of Stonington on several projects. There has, in my mind, there's always a way to get someone in a contract to dedicate this funding that can't be jeopardized by a vote. And that's what I would look for on anything that I have to wait on Stonington for. So I'm, I'm supportive of the zero for that fact alone. If Stonington wants anything from us, I need it in a contract.
Probably, they, they can't though until they have a vote of the people that can enter them into that contract. The, the difference this time though, between this and the bridges, their board of finance seems to be, their, their chair of the board of finance is visiting town council. They seem like they're supportive. So once the, once whatever combination is right for those people in the past, then I think it'll be good to go.
Right.
And this is also one of those instances where we wouldn't only be building half of a bridge if we allocated the funding. So it very well may be that one side does this ahead of the other side. That's not the ideal, but that's what it might end up being. And then whichever side has parking meters first, the other side's going to feel some parking crunch for a little while. But things will end up filtering out, because if you look at some of the other now private lots on the Groton side in Mystic, people are charging some pretty high numbers for parking and their lots are full. So the, the, the market is there.
Understood. Mine's just a point of principle.
Yeah.
Um, any other comments or questions from committee members? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstaining? All right, we are moving on to C I P E, the Mystic Coastal Access Trail and Signage Program. Do I have a number to move a number?
I just want to make sure if the rate number was any, does this reduce by the town council?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a second?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Renner, would you like to speak to this item?
Sure, so the, our office has been working with Kenton Frost to improve coastal access wayfinding signage in downtown Mystic coastal area. There is a coastal access trail, although it is not a continuous trail right now. There are some areas where we don't have access across a property, and that's where things get a, a little difficult, I think, for people trying to walk through there. The trail itself is expanded as properties along the Mystic waterfront are redeveloped. There's actually one right now that we're talking to a property owner that we will get a, a nice trail connection through if plans proceed as we expect them to. We're asking for ninety five thousand dollars for the design permitting. We actually have to go through the Historic District Commission, and that'll allow for the installation of kiosks and new signage at key entrance points along the trail and signage on the ground as well as on some of the dock pilings. Before we move forward with this, we still have a little bit of additional work and refinement on the plan and some of the design on the signage. We want to do a little bit more public outreach on some of that and bring it back before the town council for their full buy-in and blessing. But we're ninety percent of the way there. We just, we want to do a little bit more refinement work on it, but a lot of the locations, the types assigned, people like them, we just want to do a little bit more, making sure people understand what it is we're doing before we go and install.
Got it. Don't, don't we have a resident who specifically cares a great deal about?
Yeah. Or a resident, just sort of, you know.
Opinion columnist.
Yes.
And that's how it made it. So do you have a question or comment on this?
No, just wanted to confirm that that's, that's heard a lot about.
Yes, okay. Think about, um, my question is, Mr. Bert. So I understand that one of the issues is that property owners right there on the shoreline continue to take down the signs and dispute whether or not there's public access. Is this right that the town has spent lots of money on lawyers to assert? Is this now written into the deeds? Do we have this very, like?
Well, the ones we're signing, they are written into the deeds. And we haven't actually had that much trouble with, I think, some of the complaints were that, you know, that's too small a sign to know it's part of the trail. That's, I think, but we, when we started looking at this, well, I know you were looking at, right, guy?
Yeah.
Oh, with the city general, and I know that there was me, but we went out, I think there was only a couple of signs actually missing. So the, the issue is that there were the properties such as the powerhouse condo that used to be, and there did use access to the gentleman's completely right. However, it was never written into any deed or easement and has been abandoned for a long time. So really, you know, and they have, we've met with them a couple of times, and it hasn't so far been interest, didn't allow it public access. But it's not something we have a legal right to. If you're like, if somebody twenty years ago used your property, quit using it, now came back, said, I'm going to use your property. But the only other one we, that wasn't signed, that if you go down to the, what's the Marina Down the?
Oh, um.
Questions left, anyways, the, now they really work out. Swatter Street, West Columbia.
Yes.
Anyways, originally that, a, a long, long time ago, there was a road, kind of their trail that went through there, but now it's now just work. An area there, so they created these, so over time, it would stop at any other property, it put a nice gazebo, so people could sit there. Honestly, where the road goes to is, or the railroad tracks, and it's only straight, there's really nothing.
Fort Rachel Marina.
What's that?
Fort Rachel Marina.
Yeah, yeah, there really doesn't see there anyways, so that was the one thing council chose not to, you know, they want, they want to disrupt the commercial property. And it'd be dangerous for people to, and really gain anything.
And on that property, we have access, there's a gazebo there, there's a dock there. There, there's a number of things there, and all of our site plan approvals have a note on the plan of where access is allowed. And we have a standard way of doing it now.
Yep. So I see fifteen for planning and engineering, sixty for construction, and it's the same for the following year. Do we expect the planning and engineering to be done in the same year and the construction to be done in the same year?
Uh, it's fifteen and eighty.
Fifteen and eighty? It's fifteen.
Is that Mystic signage?
Gateway.
I don't know. So fifteen and eighty?
Yes.
Point still stands, do we expect to be planning and engineering to finish in the same year and the construction to finish in the same year?
Yes.
Okay.
When we do have a completed plan, it's just that we want to make sure people are comfortable with it, and adjustments we need to.
Again, that, the plan that's out there is on our webpage, it's been out for a while, we presented it to the council a few years ago. And, you know, COVID slowed a lot of things down.
Sure. Any other questions or comments from committee members?
I have. Numbers and bodies, yeah.
No.
I think sections of it, well, part is because it's disjointed, it's hard, and that's why we want to get this done. So you actually go.
Yes.
People might think they're going through private property when there is news, and we want to make it very clear, you can't go on this property.
Not using.
Yeah, now, coming off the main street, I think a fair number of, Zestino works there.
Yep.
You know, a fair number of people walk along there, kind of cut into the parking lots there, so that gets used a lot. But you can continue on, permanent.
And then now, the, the new connection that's been done around Central Hall, a lot of people I see walking through there. But we don't have, we haven't done a counter. Is that something, you know, on a busy Saturday, I'm, I'm sure the numbers would be off the chart, you know, come the summers.
But there'll be a lot more usage once it's devised.
Yes.
Get away from Main Street.
Has, has the town worked with the Thames River Heritage Park? I know they have walking tours and they, like, and they have an app, and they just add it in, you can listen to it. Is this a trail on there or has the town worked or spoken?
No.
Someone on the board of the Thames River Heritage Park.
Yeah.
So if we decide you want to work with somebody.
Well, I think, I think that'd be great, you know, folks who have that app and see those lists of trails now, seeing that that is.
It's a.
Yeah, we definitely want to widely emphasize it.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
I didn't know you were on the, they're bored.
I am.
Very nice. All right, any other comments or questions from committee members? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me abstaining. Now we're on F, Plan of Conservation and Development. Can I have a committee member, please?
Second? It didn't get changed by the town.
No, it did, that's a fairly vital one.
Mr. Renner, would you like to speak to your number?
Sure, so we're requesting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This will be something that we hire a consultant for this fee. Frankly, most municipalities of our size are spending a lot more money than this on these types of plans. We are looking to leverage this with some other plans and actions that we're working on, sustainability and resiliency, our climate action plan, the Mystic River Sustainability Plan. So some of the outreach and just awareness that we're doing with some of our other initiatives will help a lot with the informing this as well as some of the other plans and documents we've done over the last couple of years. So I feel confident that we can have a good plan done for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of all of our budget items for C I P. This is the most critical one. We're required by state law to update our Plan of Conservation and Development every ten years. The last one took a while to do. We actually, I think, started it as a department somewhere around two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve-ish, and it took, you know, it wasn't until two thousand and sixteen, there was a change in staff during that time, and things just kind of slowed down a little bit. But this is our long range document. We want to make sure that we get a good sense of what people are looking for, because development is always in the news. People, you know, the long range of what Groton wants to continue to be or how it wants to change in the future from a land use and development perspective is really driven through this document. It's something that the consultant works closely with staff, and our Planning and zoning commission is the group that ultimately approves this. But the more participation that we can have from the public, the more input, the more that our commission hears about what people are looking for, what the concerns are, and more difficult conversations that we have as a group about how Groton is growing and changing our role as, you know, a, a key place in the economy for southeastern Connecticut and what's our role as it relates to that for development, recreation, open space, you know, affordable housing, you name it. And, and those are the things that, the real ideas and goals are fleshed out in this document, and then the implementation of it. We always, of those goals, we always look back to this document, and then that's when we do those special plans or special projects, so.
Any comments or questions from committee members? Any comments or questions from committee members? Surprisingly quiet tonight, Bob. Anyone? Um, Mr. Reiner, could you speak to what the public engagement and development of this plan will be?
So we're with this plan as well as with our climate action plan. We want to start taking a little bit of a different approach in how we do public engagement. I think some of our more recent projects, uh we've been trying to do more community outreach, more um. Meetings where, you know, people putting sticky dots dots up on a board, uh some of the things we've done with Claude Chester. Uh we're not only having public meetings at this room uh in the areas, our sustainable uh Mystic project that we're working on. We're trying to get into the areas that are actually affected. We're also pushing a lot of things onto our online platform, which I think as time is going on, people are seeing. Just how many hits and views and input we're getting on some of those with our opera project. The numbers that we have of people viewing, voting, being informed was astronomical, better than anything else that we've ever done. So that's one piece of it. What we really want to do uh with this plan is to start looking more at focus groups because we want to make sure we're getting. Um not just the same twenty people who are always involved. We want to make sure that um we're getting all areas of town, not just those that like to show up to meetings. Thirty-one percent of our population is minorities. We don't see that showing up at our public meetings. We need to do the best that we can to get out there and just because people show up at a meeting. It doesn't mean that they feel comfortable speaking in this type of platform. This is very intimidating to a lot of people. They don't know how to speak up in a room full of angry people with scenting voices. So what we've seen other municipalities really doing um that are a little bit more, you know, cutting edge on stuff is having more focus groups. And the interesting part of that is you'll see at a typical public hearing, public sentiment says this. And then as soon as you start breaking out to focus groups, you're getting an entirely different message. So we then have to take that message of, all right, well, you heard this at a public meeting from these fifteen people, our consultant uh from, you know. And they're the same folks that you might always hear from. As we got into some of these other neighborhoods, um people that don't normally populate our our public meetings. We're hearing a whole different story and we need to then take that data and present it to our Planning and Zoning Commission. And they make the ultimate decision on how things are done.
So just to break that down further, you're going, is one of the plans like go to every like ABC, right? So like the Shellfish Commission, you're going to go to planning zoning, obviously.
Yeah.
Um but you're going to go kind of like round robin with those folks.
That's the easy part.
That's the easy part.
Because they they have a place. Yeah.
Do we have like translation services so we can start um moving into, I'm thinking specifically like. The new Asia market up there, how beneficial it would be if we had um information. In the languages of of that constituency posted up there, I mean, um or some of the other. Um markets that serve different kind of sub communities here in town. I at one point I heard a figure of how many languages were spoke in Groton. But do we have translation services? Is that kind of part of the budget? How are we reaching folks who don't use English as a primary communication?
This point, when I mentioned, I was at a conference uh not very long ago where there was a company that does that. And they either, you know, you know, stat, you know, the bonus people like, but they also have people who just translate that. That's very to a particular like, um I've talked about that before, that like to eventually have a budget built in for that type of thing.
And and John and I actually spoke about this maybe a month or so ago when I started drafting an email for him because. About this very topic, because we get people that come to the front counter here that do not speak English. And then it's okay, we're getting somebody on the phone that they can interpret or it might be Google Translate and it's not always perfect. So that's something we're still trying to figure out the best way of doing that. Um but our Greater Groton website, you pick the language. And it'll, everything will transform into another language. So that's something that we really liked about that platform. So at least from an online perspective, there's multiple languages.
Sure.
And I'd be happy to talk to you offline about all this stuff and get some ideas because.
Oh, yeah.
It's not as we're kicking these things around and trying to find a better way. It's, it's not just us, like we need help from everybody. And if. The more people that input and help us spread the word, push it out on their own social media, help us hang up flyers and get out there. It it only helps the community more.
Thank you.
Do you envision these focus groups to be is consultant who um is identified here. Um as being the one who runs the focus groups or is that separate? It's not, that's not funded within this project.
No, that would be funded within some of this project.
Typically would be an engineering firm or?
No, so definitely not an engineering firm. So usually it's a planning um firm that will put these types of things together. Sometimes you'll see that they have, it it it's usually really a multidisciplinary firm. They may have folks with a background in architecture, landscape, architecture, but mostly it's planning, it's community building and consensus building, it's public outreach. So there's a lot more that you see of these plans are now being crafted more by people with the specialization in public outreach and engagement. Because that's the most important part. I can write a great plan, but if none of you agree with me on it, it's not worth the paper it's it's written on, so.
Great, thank you. I think that is a great approach, focus group.
Yeah.
And we just hope this is enough money to do it all.
Yeah. Um I implore you not to spend any of this money on little sticky dots on.
Oh, we have sticky dots already.
Yeah. Hopefully.
I will bring.
Representative Brennan?
Yes, I apologize. I have another commitment, so I need to be excused. I just wanted to.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Abstaining. Thank you, Mr. Reiner. And one more.
Yes.
Got one more. CIP seven L. Somebody please move that number. It has not been changed.
Seven L.
The Planning and Public Works Electronic Document Management System. The number is one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Oh, that's the one that's on two. Got it.
Right, so that's on page two forty-two.
Yep. They were listed not in order, did the month sheet, so that's why I. Okay.
Move the numbers.
Oh, yes, I one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Thank you. Uh would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, so this is not as cool and dynamic as our Plan of Conservation and Development, but this. But but it's all, it's very important, so it's just not as cool and dynamic, but it's also something that's very important. So as we continue to talk more about, excuse me, transparency, open government, how do people get access to documents? We have a vault downstairs full of files. We have file cabinets that are filled with papers. We're running out of rooms. So uh Planning and Development Services and Public Works share a lot of this space and we're busting at the seams. This is our first step to digitize all of these documents that we can put them out on the web. So people don't need to come and ask. It's just all there. And this is something, I I think it's very exciting. I think it's very necessary and it's what we all expect now. I mean, with, what do you mean their webpage isn't up to date? You know, it's people just expect to be able to see everything on here and on your computer. So it's, it's something that costs a fair bit of money. We worked with a consulting firm that is on the state um master price agreement. So they gave us a general number of what it would cost to do ours and public works. And that's how we fabricated, uh came up with this uh this number. We finalized the number from that. And this is the first step in a multi-year project.
Questions or comments from committee members? I think it's super cool. Don't integrate it.
Oh, good.
Love to see something like this. Um I think it's well worth the money. My question is, uh definitely, this is more than just scanning, uh you know, static PDF. This is searchable. This is going to be, yep.
Yeah. No, that's the plan. And you know, it, I'm constantly thinking about just the way we're going to do it and work with. The the folks that are doing it so that we want to make sure it's easy to use. We're not, we're not going to do something that is just, oh, yeah, there's ten thousand scanned pages. That can have at it. No, it it needs to be linked to properties to to a database, so.
It includes the RTM budget book.
I think that's already on our webpage.
It's not searchable.
Oh, certainly. Yeah, maybe by keyword.
We've been just getting an Excel sheet and help. But yes, um thank you very much. Any other questions, comments from the committee on this item? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Abstaining. Thank you, Mr. Reiner.
Thank you very much.
All right, so it's seven oh two. Any final question, comments, quotes, clips, queries? All right, uh motion to adjourn? So, well, I'm not making a motion. Someone make a motion.
A motion to adjourn.
Got it. Second. All those in favor? Have a great night.
Thank you.